Well, welcome to our fourth session of Psalms, studying on the character of God. I'm Justin Law and it's a pleasure to be presenting our Bible study for us during this session. We've looked over three different sections of the Psalms as we study God's character. And today we have a real treat, I hope, and that's going to be studying God's goodness and how it can be seen both in His justice and in His mercy. And so today I want to begin our session with just talking about some opposites. You know, we can just say opposites really quickly, right? Like, let's see, how about fire and ice, right? Those are completely opposites. How about day and night? How about dead or alive? You know, the empty tomb? And my pretty favorite, since we're in the state of Alabama, Alabama or Auburn? Now, they're similar, but we always feel like they are complete opposites in our state. Well, many people consider justice and mercy to just be completely polar opposites. They believe that there can either be justice when people get what they deserve, or there's mercy when people don't get what they deserve. And that perception causes them to misunderstand God's nature of being both just and merciful. So the truth of the matter is, is that God doesn't just fit into our two boxes of either/or. His goodness can be seen in His justice and His mercy. So there is no either or/or. So in this session today, we want to get a little background where we're coming from, and then we'll jump into the study. In this session, we'll be studying the Psalms of Asaph. Now, I want to make a disclaimer. We're in the South, and if you've ever read the beginning of a Psalm where it's attributed to whoever wrote it, you're probably going to say that you've been saying Asaph the whole time. I know I have said Asaph anytime I've seen that, but through this study, I've learned that his name was Asaph. But forgive me if I do say Asaph, because that's probably going to happen. But the Psalms of Asaph, we're going to use that to discover God's goodness in His justice and His mercy. This will cover the Psalms 73 through 83. And these 12 Psalms are headed with his name, a Psalm of Asaph. Asaph was one of the choir directors for Israel and a chief musician under King David. And he was a Levite, which meant that he was from the tribe of Levi. And we typically think about Levites as being the priest. Well, all priests were Levites, but not all Levites were priests. And so they were responsible for temple worship. They were responsible for taking care of the temple. And so at this time in Israelite, in Israel's history, there were around 38,000 Levites, with about 4,000 of them being musicians. And David actually created three choirs, and Asaph led one of those choirs. And so the 12 Psalms attributed to Asaph could refer to Asaph himself, his physical descendants, or the musicians that came after him. And 11 of these Psalms are classified as Psalms of lament, which we will study today. The Psalms are often an invitation for us to be honest with God. As you read the Psalms, there is no doubt that you just see honesty. You see words from the heart coming out that sometimes make us very uncomfortable, because we think, how could they talk to God that way? How could they speak to Him in that tone or that manner and ask Him to do the things that they asked Him to do? How could they talk to God like that? Well, we're going to see that today, that there are reasons behind that honest conversation that the Psalmist had. So as we begin our study, I want to invite us to pray together and ask the Lord to open our eyes so that we can see His goodness in both His justice and His mercy as we study the Psalms. So let's pray together. Father, we just are thankful for this time to study Your Word. God, I pray for each and every person who is listening today, that they would have their ears attuned to hear so that they can learn and know and be better, they would have a better knowledge, but then that would result in a better relationship with you, that we would understand that you are good no matter what, even when we can't see it and understand it. So God, speak to us now as we study Your Word. I ask this in Jesus's name, amen. Well, the first thing we're going to look at today is we're going to see how God's goodness can be seen in His justice. Now, to begin, we need to understand where the Jewish people really were coming from when they were thinking about the justice of God. The Jewish people's legal system was based on the Ten Commandments, as well as all the other laws that were given in parts of Leviticus and Numbers and Deuteronomy, the books, the Torah, the law. And it instructed them on how to live. And this included the moral law, the civil law, as well as the ceremonial law. And if they observed, what they believed is if they observed God's law, then they would be blessed. And if they failed to observe God's law, they would be cursed. This was justice, getting what they deserved. That is what they believed. That's how they related to the justice of God. Now, note, there's no doubt that the Bible speaks of God's anger toward Israel and His wrath against when they disobeyed His law or rebelled and worshiped false gods. But the question is, did God actually punish Israel for their sins with just retribution? Or did He simply withhold His blessing and allow the natural consequences to occur as a result of their disobedience? As we study the Psalms, I want you to keep in mind that this is representative of the nation Israel who is crying out to God. This is not a Gentile. This isn't a lost person. It's God's chosen people. And we need to remember this so that we can accurately understand and apply these Psalms to our lives, which is our goal, for us to have something to say and believe and do because of it. So let's begin with Psalm 73, verse 1, "to lay the groundwork for their biblical understanding of justice." This is the first Psalm of Asaph in our study, and it says this, "God is indeed good to Israel, to the pure in heart." Now, that's a pretty simple verse, that God is good to Israel, the pure in heart. There's a relationship between God's goodness and when they're behaving, when their lives are in line and in tune with what He desires of them. And it affirms that very understanding of the people who receive the goodness of God, the pure in heart. "Those who pursue the will of God are blessed." And so what are the negative truths that are implied by this passage? If we flip this on its head, we would see that the belief would be that the wicked would be punished, those acting in contradiction to the way in the will of God. But here's the issue. Misunderstanding God's justice can raise a lot of questions, like these questions that are raised throughout these Psalms. We're going to look at a few verses here. Psalm 73:13, "Did I purify my heart and washed my hands in innocence for nothing?" Psalm 74:1, "Why have you rejected us forever, God? Why does your anger burn against the sheep of your pasture?" Psalm 74:10 and 11, "God, how long will the enemy mock? Will the foe insult your name forever? Why do you hold back your hand, stretch out your right hand, and destroy them?" Psalm 77:7 through 9, "Will the Lord reject forever and never again show favor? Has his faithful love ceased forever? Is his promise at an end for all generations? Has God forgotten to be gracious? Has He in anger withheld His compassion?" In Psalm 79:5, "How long, Lord, will you be angry forever? Will your jealousy keep burning like fire?" These are some serious questions that the Psalmist brings to the surface as he considers how they are experiencing what he would think is not the justice of God. When might we ask some of these questions or similar ones? Well, I was thinking on that. We may ask some of these questions when it seems that everything is going wrong, even though we're doing everything right, when we feel distant from God and like He's quiet and maybe even absent. Maybe we would ask these questions when we feel like we've experienced enough of the consequences for our actions, yet we're still experiencing them. And then possibly when we are living in the aftermath of the consequences of those who came before us. You see, the Psalmist raises his concern to the Lord. And I would say that we too can raise our concerns to the Lord, because as he spoke to the Lord and raised his concern and spoke from his heart, what he was saying, although it may seem like he was questioning God, what he really wanted was an answer from the Lord. And we will see that in just a few minutes. But because of the faith tradition of Israel, when the Psalmist looked at the wicked and then looked at himself, he was conflicted. In the commentary, as I study for this, I want to read a passage. It says, "It is common for people to feel the same way today. We do our best and wonder why God does not bless us. We see others who have no time for God enjoying a hedonistic lifestyle, living a life of wealth and luxury while seemingly immune to the hardship. Like the Psalmist, we envy worldly entertainers and corrupt politicians in their popularity and their success. And we subtly begin to wonder, does God have a different standard of justice?" Well, here's what Psalm 73:2 through 5 says. "Asaph raised this to the Lord." He says, "But as for me, my feet, they almost slipped. My steps nearly went astray. For I envied the arrogant; I saw the prosperity of the wicked. They have an easy time until they die, and their bodies are well-fed. They are not in trouble like others; they are not afflicted like most people." And then he also says in 73:21 and 22, "When I became embittered and my innermost being was wounded, I was senseless, and I didn't understand. I was an unthinking animal toward you." So what happens when we try to answer all of our questions about God's justice with a limited understanding of divine justice? Well, we begin to lose focus on the goodness of God, and we don't see the bigger picture. We begin to pity ourselves and look at where we are and what's going on in our lives. And we fail to see how God is working around us and how God is using our current circumstances, even though we may not even see it. When we're looking into ourselves and instead of to God, we fail to see what God could do and what God can do. We fail to see that He is bringing about justice and how His mercy is actually being extended. But the good thing here is that Asaph got the right perspective. So let's see how the Psalmist gained the right perspective about God's goodness in His justice. In Psalm 73:16 through 19, he said, "When I tried to understand all this, it seemed hopeless." It may seem hopeless when we are caught in a circumstance where we see where we're at in the world and we think, what is going on? What is going to happen? What's going to come about? It seemed hopeless until I entered God's sanctuary. And then I understood their destiny. Indeed, you put them in slippery places. You make them fall into ruin. How suddenly they became a desolation. They come to an end swept away by terrors." So where did he gain the right perspective? He gained it when he entered into God's sanctuary. His understanding became fuller. And so what does that mean for us? We have to change our view and move to the next plane in order to rightly understand how God is at work. We can't stay here in the temporal. We can't stay here in the earthly, in the physical, in the flesh. We have to be thinking and living and acting and believing in the Spirit in order to understand the things of the Lord. And so I challenge you. If you're in a spot right now where you just feel like you are not getting the justice of God that you deserve or the mercy of the Lord that you would like, ask God to show you what He is doing. Ask God to help you trust Him and to see how He is and will work in your life. We have to seek God if we are going to understand His ways and character as it pertains to His goodness. "It was then that the Psalmist understood how God was, in both His mercy and justice, keeping His people from indulging in sinful pleasures like the wicked do." You see, that's what the problem was. They saw the wicked prospering, and they became kind of envious of what they had. But we need to rely on the Lord. We have to trust Him that He has the best in store for us. And if we were to indulge in those sinful pleasures, we would not be getting the real result and the real fruit in our lives, the real gift and blessing of the Lord that we would like. He always wants us to be restored and to bring us to repentance. And not just those who have called on Him for salvation, but for everyone. He can use every life circumstance in consequence to get our attention and put our faith in Him. Aren't you thankful that nothing happens without a purpose? As a believer in God, the Creator of the universe, the sovereign Lord over everything, nothing happens without Him knowing about it and without Him being able to work it together for our good and for His glory. So everything we go through, it has a purpose. And we want to see God's purpose, and we want to be a part of that purpose. So let's trust Him in these circumstances. So when we have a biblical understanding of God's justice, we can receive blessing and assurance in spite of difficult circumstances. So that's how we see God's goodness in His justice. But let's look now at another principle of justice that we sometimes have a little misunderstanding. You've probably heard the saying, "Justice delayed is justice denied." We often feel that way about how justice is served in our country and in other places across the world, not just in our court systems, but in life in general. Here in America, the suspect has a right to a speedy and fair trial so that justice can be served swiftly. However, with social media, we see more than ever before the call for justice in the form of a verdict to be served immediately, even before the facts are out. And when we say, "justice delayed is justice denied," we then put justice into an either/or box. And what we're really saying is that we know what true justice is and how to bring it about. And what this really shows in our life is our tendency to tell God how to exact justice and when He should exact justice, which is oftentimes immediately, in the moment. Well, I have a familiar example in my own family. I have a five-year-old son named Brantley and a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter named Mary Blake. And Mary Blake's just now getting into the age where there's a little more discipline in her life, a little more correction, maybe a little pop and maybe taking away a toy or something along those lines. Well, my five-year-old son thinks that he knows what the punishment's going to be whenever she does something wrong. And so just here recently, Mary Blake, she was, I forgot exactly what she was doing. But when Brantley was standing there and he said, "Oh, that's going to be no baby dolls." Like, really? Why does he get to make that decision? Why does he think that he knows what the punishment should be? You know, so we have this natural tendency in our lives to say, that's the punishment, and this is when it should happen. You know that you did this, and that's what it's going to be. But we need to trust God. I know that's a little example, but in our big life circumstances, the one who can give the right justice and mercy is only the Lord. So in our next verses, we're going to explore what are called imprecatory Psalms. These Psalms consist of the Psalmist, which is known as the complainant, wishing misfortune on his adversaries. As we will see, God sometimes allows a time of suffering and hardship so one can discover His ultimate purpose and His fuller mercy. Again, we're going to look at a few different verses to help us see how God is at work, even when we don't see it. Psalm 74:11 says, "Why do you hold back your hand? Stretch out your right hand and destroy them." Psalm 79:6, "Pour out your wrath on the nations that don't acknowledge you, on the kingdoms that don't call on your name." And then this one is my personal favorite, Psalm 83:13 through 15, "Make them like tumbleweed, my God, like straw before the wind. As fire burns a forest and as a flame blazes through mountains, so pursue them with your tempest and terrify them with your storm." Hey, Asaph had some deep passion for wanting justice to be served to his enemies and to the wicked, those who were mocking God and who were against Him and against His God. He uses some very powerful words, and they probably make us a little uncomfortable, right? Surely, you aren't praying to God in this way for your enemies. Although I'd bet that you have asked God to intervene in some difficult relationships, in some difficult circumstances. And maybe you have said a few things that might be in our timeframe equivalent to what Asaph was saying. The words the Psalmist uses like destroy and wrath and asking God to be a tempest and to terrify them, to make them into tumbleweed and to blow them through the wind. These are pretty deadly and strong words. And we might think, does he really mean that? Well, the question is, is how do we rightly understand and apply these Psalms of imprecation in light of the fact that Jesus came to fulfill the Old Testament and not to discard it? So what do we learn from Jesus? Well, here's a few things we need to see. First off, we have to consider the context. Now, the common lament was always asking God, why did God allow Israel, who He promised to bless, to be defeated by their enemies? And why did the wicked prosper while God's people suffered? So that's the context. These laments always were asking God these questions. They were asking God, and after asking God about what's going on, they oftentimes felt this strong overwhelming just passion in them to see justice be served. The second thing we have to remember is that it's important to understand that the Psalms are poetry. And so there is dramatization and exaggeration. Asaph didn't really want a tornado come down and just to wipe them out necessarily. But what he is wanting is for God's justice to be served. Number three, these curses aren't over trivial matters, like someone taking your parking spot, or maybe someone got in line that had more than 10 items in the express lane at Publix, or someone maybe even stole your money. These aren't over trivial matters. These people were mocking and dishonoring God by harming His people. So this was a big deal. These are not, this isn't just simple trivial things that they're talking about. And then the last point we have to realize in the context is that they also don't seek personal vengeance. The Psalmist places the action in the right hands, God's, to vindicate himself and receive the glory and the respect that he deserves. And so when we look at the Psalms of lament and these imprecatory Psalms, we have to remember these four criteria so that we can rightly understand them. Psalm 83:16 through 18, the Psalmist says, "Cover their faces with shame, so that they will seek your name, Lord. Let them be put to shame and terrified forever. Let them perish in disgrace. May they know that you alone, whose name is the Lord, are the Most High over the whole earth." So you can see here that they are seeking God in what He would do to the people, to the wicked that were harming them and dishonoring God. But what we really want to see is that Jesus fulfills and actually transforms the Psalms of imprecation. Because in His mercy, He chose to take our shame on Himself so that we can know God. The Psalmist asked for Him to cover their face with shame. But what did Jesus? He takes away our shame. He stands in the gap. He is the justice and mercy of God. In His mercy, He chose to take our shame on Himself so that we can know God. The shame that this wish for by the Psalmist can be taken away in Jesus. And when you and I feel this same shame, Jesus can take it away as well. Well, it's also possible that justice seems to be delayed so that you and I can work for justice. We have to remember that we are the hands and feet of Jesus. We're called to be out there and bringing justice into the lives of our community and into our world, and we do that by sharing the good news. We meet the spiritual needs of people. We meet physical needs of people by helping the least of these however we can. Because the reality is that God is not to blame for poverty, for racism, and for oppression in our world. He is not to blame. That is the result of our sin and our failure to submit to Him as God. The Israelites seem to forget that they were oppressed by their enemies because of their faithlessness. They were faithless towards their God. But it was in God's mercy that He used those consequences to turn His people to Him and then brought justice to resolve their situation. So our world is experiencing the consequences of sin, and the only way to be freed from it is to receive the mercy of God and allow Him to bring justice to it. God's justice might seem delayed because He is doing something that we cannot see. A few years ago, right before COVID, actually, there was a song that came out, and we would sometimes sing it on Sunday night in our worship service. And it's called "Wavemaker." And in that song, the bridge goes like this. It says, "Even when I don't see it, you're working. Even when I don't feel it, you're working. You never stop. You never stop working. Lord, you never stop. You never stop working." Y'all, God is doing things that we can't even see. And we have to trust Him in that fact. When God is silent in the context of suffering and injustice, it doesn't contradict His goodness, but it reminds us that His ways are not our ways, and His timing is not our timing. So why should we be thankful for God's delayed justice? Well, when it comes to sin and judgment, we should be thankful that He didn't exact judgment on us when we first sinned. Otherwise, you and I wouldn't be here today. If God just went ahead and the first time we sinned, we were done, we wouldn't be here right now. So God is patient. He reserves that wrath, and He gives us the opportunity to receive His mercy. So we see that God sometimes allows a time of suffering and hardship so one can discover His ultimate purpose and fuller mercy. In the commentary, it refers to Jerry Rankin. Jerry Rankin is a former IMB missionary and our IMB president. And he was telling a story about when, just after the fall of the Soviet Union, those countries in Central and Eastern Europe were opened up again for missionaries to go into the country. And the first missionaries went in, and he went over there to spend some time and to encourage them. And he was sitting there, and he was talking with a small group of them, and they had a time of prayer. And one of those missionaries said a prayer like this. He said, "Lord, I praise you for the 70 years of communist power over these countries." Now, if you're thinking like me, like, really? Did he just say that? Jerry was thinking, did I hear him correctly? So after the fact, he called him aside and said, "Why did you pray that? Why did you pray that prayer?" And the missionary said this. He said that for hundreds of years, Central Asia was a stronghold of the Muslim faith. And in just 70 years of domination by the atheistic ideology of the Soviet Union, these people are now spiritually deprived and are open to hearing the gospel of Jesus Christ. So you see, that's a great injustice. But how did God work in and through it? It allowed for them to become spiritually deprived so that the gospel could come into their hearts and to their lives and in the circumstances that they were in. It allowed them to hear and know and hopefully even believe, as we know, because churches are there to believe in Jesus. In His mercy, God withholds His justice for our opportunity to repent and be redeemed. We have to trust in God's perfect timing. We have to trust in God's perfect timing. So recognizing that we have all received God's mercy because of his delayed justice, it should prompt us to remember, to do some honest remembering and reflecting on what God has done for us. In Psalm 77:10-15, the Psalmist says, "So I say, 'I am grieved that the right hand of the Most High has changed. I will remember the Lord's work. Yes, I will remember your ancient wonders. I will reflect on all you have done and meditate on your actions. God, your way is holy.'" What God is great like God. You are the God who works wonders. You revealed your strength among the peoples. With power, you redeemed your people and the descendants of Jacob and Joseph. And then in 78:38 and 39, "Yet he was compassionate. He atoned for their iniquity and did not destroy. He often turned his anger aside and did not unleash all his wrath. He remembered that they were only flesh, a wind that passes and does not return." So we see here that when the Psalmist honestly wrestled with God and got past his own human understanding, that God led him to the truth, that God's justice and mercy were not contradictory, they were compatible. The Hebrew word for the word mercy is "cased," which is translated as grace in the New Testament. Now, in more recent translations of the Old Testament, there's been a kind of a new word, a new combo word that was made to more accurately describe and to separate the word for mercy and the word for what God was showing here, and that is loving kindness. The word was chosen because it is from God's deep love that he shows kindness to us that he didn't have to bestow. And so mercy is the result of God's love in action. It's kindness, as Pastor Marcus recently preached about, is love in action. And so it's God's loving kindness, that mercy that he shows us. Each of the Psalms of lament conclude that the outcome will be loving kindness and vindication at the hand of God because of his goodness and his moral reliability. So as we conclude here, I want us to see that it's not either/or. It's not either/or, but it's really both and, justice and mercy. The two do not fit into either/or boxes, but they come together in one powerful demonstration of God's goodness. God's goodness is most clearly seen in the cross, when justice and mercy meet. When we reflect on the goodness shown to us through Jesus, we can make the same determination that the Psalmist made. On the cross, justice and mercy met when Jesus took our sin that we could not repay and gave us what we could never earn ourselves. Psalm 73:23-26, the Psalmist says, "Yet I am always with you. You hold my right hand. You guide me with your counsel, and afterward you will take me up in glory. Who do I have in heaven but you? And I desire nothing on earth but you. My flesh and my heart may fail, but God is the strength of my heart, my portion forever." So friends, as we conclude this time together, I encourage you and invite you to reflect on what Jesus did on the cross and how his justice, how the justice of God and the mercy of God were met together on that one specific day, taking place on that one specific man, the Son of God. And so that when we see injustice in this world, and when we are calling and asking God for justice and mercy, that we can look to the cross and know that he has it under control and that he has already provided the answer and the hope that we need. Thank you for joining us today.